Council, please come to order and join me in the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please call the roll. Here.
Backover?
Here.
Brandon Horst?
Yes.
Dan Stryland?
Here.
Peter.
I'd like to thank everyone for coming out on such a warm and wonderful evening to witness our festivities here tonight. I'd like to announce that there will be no policy planning meeting following the regular council meeting. I know that is disappointing to everybody. We will move on to the approval of the consent agenda or approval of the tentative agenda. Do I hear motion for approval?
So moved.
Dan Stryland?
Support.
Support Backover? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say yes. Close call. Call the roll.
Dan Stryland?
Yes.
Backover?
Yes.
Brandon Horst?
Yes.
Skibout?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes. Motion carried. Item number three, I would like to reappoint Mark DeYoung as mayor pro temp. The mayor pro temp performs the duties of the mayor in cases of absence or inability of the mayor to perform such duties. Mark has been a council member since 1978 and was first appointed as mayor pro temp in January of 1984. His appointment is for two-year term expiring January of 2020. Do I hear motion for approval?
So moved.
Backover and Skibout? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say yes. Close call. Call the roll.
Backover?
Yes.
Skibout?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Abstain.
Brandon Horst?
Yes.
Dan Stryland?
Yes.
Motion carried. Item number four, I would also like to reappoint Mandy Smith as city clerk. The city code requires the council to appoint a city clerk at the council meeting in January following the regular city election. And you have served as the city clerk since December of 2016. Do I hear motion for approval?
So moved.
Support.
Skibout? Support Dan Stryland? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say yes. Close call. Call the roll.
Skibout? Dan Stryland?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Backover?
Yes.
Brandon Horst?
Yes.
Motion carried. On to number five, I'd like to reappoint Doug Van Gorgum as the fire chief. Doug has served as the fire chief since January of 2005. His appointment is for a two-year term expiring in January of 2020. Do I hear motion for approval?
So moved.
Doug Van Gorgum? Support DeYoung? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say yes. Close call. Call the roll.
Backover?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Brandon Horst?
Yes.
Dan Stryland?
Yes.
Skibout?
Yes.
Motion carried. Number six, Kathy Brooksford has served as the Historic Preservation Commission since May of 2015 and is interested in being reappointed for an additional term. She is the owner-operator franchise of H&R Block and has a degree in political science and international studies from Iowa State University. Kathy currently lives at 200608 Hemel Drive in Pella. If reappointed, Kathy's new term would expire January 1, 2021. Do I hear motion for approval?
Support.
Skibout?
Support.
Support DeYoung?
So moved, sorry.
Threw away a bit of fur, sorry. Keep everybody on their toes. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say yes. Close call. Call the roll.
Skibout? DeYoung?
Yes.
Backover?
Yes.
Brandon Horst?
Yes.
Dan Stryland?
Yes.
Motion carried. Item number seven, Rhonda Kremode has served on the Pella Historic Preservation Commission since May of 2015 and is interested in being reappointed to a new term. She previously served on the ad hoc Historic Preservation Committee in 2014 and has experience with window restoration and other preservation issues along with knowledge of historic tax credits and grants. Rhonda lives at 510 Broadway Street in Pella. If reappointed, Rhonda's new term would expire on January 1, 2021. Do I hear motion for approval?
So moved.
Support.
Brandon Horst and DeYoung? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say yes. Close call. Call the roll.
Brandon Horst?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Backover?
Yes.
Dan Stryland?
Yes.
Skibout?
Motion carried. Item number eight, I would like to announce that there will be a closed session pursuant to Iowa Code Chapter 21.51(c) to discuss a strategy with council in the matters that are presently in litigation or where litigation is imminent where its disclosure would be likely to prejudice or disadvantage the position the governmental body would have in that litigation. When that one is complete, there will be a second closed session pursuant to Iowa Code Chapter 21.51(c) also to discuss strategy with council in matters that are presently in litigation or where litigation is imminent where that disclosure would be likely to prejudice or disadvantage the position of the governmental body in that litigation. We'll move on to public forums. If there's anyone in attendance that would like to address the council regarding any agenda items, please step forward, speak clearly in the microphone, state your name, where you live, and please keep your comments to three minutes. Seeing none, we'll move on to the approval of the consent agenda. Do I hear motion for approval?
So moved.
Dan Stryland? Support Skibout? Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say yes. Close call. Call the roll.
Dan Stryland?
Yes.
Skibout? DeYoung?
Yes.
Backover?
Yes.
Brandon Horst?
Yes.
Motion carried. On to public hearings. Item 1A, public hearings on the proposed Southwest Urban Renewal Plan. Mike, could you please explain?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to refer everyone's attention to the big board for a brief part of a presentation. What we're recommending on the purposes of the public hearing is to discuss the proposed urban renewal plan. It's identified as a southwest urban renewal plan. We'll be showing a map of the big board on the proposed plan. But in that sense, the purpose and why we're doing this is this plan is intended to facilitate additional housing within our community. It's very important to note that recently we did have a housing assessment performed for Marion County that was done in 2015. It identified an additional 966 new housing units that need to be built in Pella by year 2025 meeting housing demand for our community. Were to do that on a percentage basis, what that means is we'd have to add about 15 to 18 percent for our housing stock to accommodate housing within our community. Now, as we said, with this, the proposed plan that we are discussing this evening is intended to address and provide additional housing options for our community. It's also specifically geared towards providing incentives for developers to provide housing for our community. It's important to note, before the city can offer any economic development incentives for additional housing in our community, we have to adopt a urban renewal plan that identifies housing as a priority. In addition, that plan also has to be in accordance with the city's comprehensive plan. So with this, we have a series of legislative actions that will be associated with adoption of the plan that we are presenting this evening. So let's go ahead, please, Jeanette. Now, it's very important to note, when we talk about the Southwest Urban Renewal Plan, there's two types of housing under Iowa law. The first type of housing is what's considered low and moderate income housing. Those are for folks or not for folks, those are for families and individuals that are 80 percent of the median income in county. That's what the state identifies as low and moderate income housing. We are not proposing that with the Southwest Urban Renewal Plan. We are proposing non-low and moderate income housing. Iowa law allows you to support non-low and moderate income housing power. There are some restrictions associated with it. So what we have with the restrictions is any type of economic development incentives will need to be geared towards the public infrastructure to accommodate new housing requirements. In addition, any type of rewards that are geared towards a developer or wanting to develop a new housing or non-LMI housing, the city will be required to set aside approximately 36 percent of those funds to dedicate towards providing low and moderate income housing within our community. So even though we are proposing non-low and moderate income housing, when you look at the 36 percent right here, there will be a significant benefit towards low and moderate income housing within our community as well. And that's all a part of the Southwest Urban Renewal Plan. Let's go ahead, please, Jeanette. Now, this is a map of the proposed Southwest Urban Renewal Plan. It's closely associated with Boss London Development. This is Boss London Drive right here. County Highway T-15 right here. The first project that we have is this blue area. This is the proposed Boss Ridge Residential Development. We have hole number four, number five of the Boss London Golf course right here. What is being proposed is 45 lot residential subdivision. The public infrastructure for this development is just over $2 million. Later on this evening, we will be proposing a development agreement that reimburses the cost of the public infrastructure that will be dedicated to the city of Pella of $1,447,659. We'll explain that further on in the presentation when we get to that item. That's the first project that we have here. The second project, this yellow area that we have right here, this is the Fairway Meadows subdivision. It's a 14-unit townhome subdivision that was previously approved by the Pella City Council. That is also included in the plan right here. The third area, we know we just have to highlight this here, this is a proposed housing cooperative area that we're currently working on right now as well. So let's go ahead, please, Jeanette. For the retirement or housing cooperative unit, what we can add is approximately 30 to 40 additional housing units within this area. And this would be in Subarea 3 or the pink area that we have right here. The valuation of the new house is expected to be right around $10 million. So the other projects that we have identified for potential development agreements, these would be feature items that are not known at this time. But through the development agreements, we've identified a maximum cap of $500,000 if not to exceed with that. So what the Southwest Urban Renewal Plan identifies again is the types of projects that can take place within the plan. So it also identifies the strategy for, so with that, we have two tringes for retirement cooperative or housing cooperative project. Also a new residential subdivision along with the Fairway Meadows subdivision as well. In addition, we've allotted $500,000 for new developments or new potential developments within this area as well. So let's go ahead, Jeanette. It's very important when we talk about the effective life of the plan and under the type of housing that's being proposed with this plan, it is limited under Iowa Code to 10 years, not unless. The school district of Marion County agrees to extend the plan for an additional five years or 15 years. That has already been approved by the Marion County Board Supervisors and the Pella Community School District, who will be considering this under D1 this evening. Let's go ahead, please, Jeanette. Now, from staff's perspective, when we look at the Southwest Urban Renewal Plan, we go back to the map. This area was identified in the city's comprehensive plan for additional housing within our community. We believe the plan aligns with the city's comprehensive plan. This plan was also presented to the Pella Planning and Zoning Commission. They unanimously approved the plan and they report to the city councils, they also believe it conforms to the lines with the city's comprehensive plan. We believe, staff does, that the plan will provide many forms or provide diverse forms of housing within our community. In addition, we also feel that the significant set aside of LMI funds with this plan will also benefit low and moderate income families within our community. So with that, Mr. Mayor, we are recommending approval this evening. Now, my preference is to end the public hearing here, but before each one of these items, we'll give a brief just overview of each one of the items as we proceed through each one of them that is necessary to approve the plan this evening. So with that, our recommendation is approval of the Southwest Urban Renewal Plan for the city of Pella. It's necessary for the city to offer economic development incentives to developers to build additional housing within our community. When we look at economic development incentives, all these incentives are geared towards the cost of the public infrastructure. That is the number one impediment when we talk about building new housing within our community. Oftentimes, the cost of the public infrastructure is somewhere between $45,000 and $60,000 per acre. Without economic development incentives, we do not think it's likely that these proposed housing projects will be built within our community. So with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes our presentation on this item. Before I can ask you questions, do I hear a council to have on this item?
Thank you, Mike. Mandy, any written comments received?
No.
Any oral comments from council? Any oral comments from members of the audience? Seeing none, do I hear motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Skibout? Support DeYoung? All in favor, please say yes. Close call. Call the roll.
Skibout? DeYoung?
Yes.
Backover?
Yes.
Brandon Horst?
Yes.
Dan Stryland?
Yes.
Motion carried. On to 1B, approval of the designated representative report on the plan.
I guess, Mr. Mayor, with this item, this accepts the designated report, approves the designated report from the city's planning and zoning commission. We reviewed this, the Southwest Urban Renewal Plan with the commission on December 18th. They unanimously approved the report. The recommendation to the city council is this plan aligns closely with the city's comprehensive plan. So this report would use it, accepts and approves the planning and zoning commission's recommendation. Additionally, we were required to hold a consultation with Marion County and the Pella Community School District. That consultation was held on December 27th. We did receive no, we didn't receive any comments. In fact, we didn't have representation show up for it. The reason why is each one of these entities approved a five-year extension to the Southwest Urban Renewal Plan. That'll be under item D1E I B this evening, so they did not come to the consultation here. So with this, this motion would simply be to accept the recommendation from the planning and zoning commission. It was also minutes from our consultation on December 27th.
Thank you, Mike. Do I hear motion for approval?
So moved.
Skibout?
Support.
Support DeYoung? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say yes. Close call. Call the roll.
Skibout? DeYoung?
Yes.
Backover?
Yes.
Brandon Horst?
Yes.
Dan Stryland?
Yes.
Motion carried. On to 1C, Resolution Number 1531 entitled, "Resolution Determining an Area of the City to be Economic Development Area and That Rehabilitation, Conservation, Redevelopment, Development, or Combination thereof of Such Area Is Necessary in the Interest of the Public Health, Safety, or Welfare of the Residents of the City Designating Such Area as Appropriate for Urban Renewal Projects and Adopting the Southwest Urban Renewal Plan." Mike, is there anything to add?
No, sir. Not a lot, but Jeanette, we can go to that. Again, this is the map of the plan right here. All these areas are identified for additional housing within our community. As the mayor said, probably the biggest takeaway for what this resolution would do is it adopts the plan for the city of Pella, the Southwest Urban Renewal Plan. So this actually approved the Southwest Urban Renewal Plan throughout the city.
Thank you, Mike. Do I hear motion for approval?
So moved.
Backover? Support Skibout? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say yes. Close call. Call the roll.
Backover?
Yes.
Skibout?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Brandon Horst?
Yes.
Dan Stryland?
Yes.
Motion carried. On to 1D, Ordinance Number 929 entitled, "Ordinance Providing That General Property Taxes Leaded and Collected Each Year on a Portion of the Property Located Within the Southwest Urban Renewal Area in the City of Pella, County of Marion, State of Iowa, By and For the Benefit of the State of Iowa, City of Pella, County of Marion, Pella Community School District, and Other Taxing Districts, Be Paid to a Special Fund for Payment of Principal and Interest on Loans, Monies Advanced to, and Indebtedness Including Bonds Issued or To Be Issued,通过the City in Connection with the Southwest Urban Renewal Area, Subarea 1." This is the first reading. Mike, would you like to? Yes, anything to add on that?
Not a lot, Mr. Mayor. What this is, this ordinance, this is to establish ordinance and establish a special collection area within every area. You can see it's colored up in here within this special fund. We would be able to collect property taxes from across from the taxing entity within this area. Overall, the city's property tax levy rate's about $33 for $1,000 taxable valuation. The city's tip rate is 28.25. So each one of the taxing entities would still collect their debt service levy. We would collect the operating levies within here, and they would be used to reimburse the developers for the cost of the public infrastructure for the potential development agreements in the future, Mr. Mayor. And it's very important to note that this would be property taxes for new homes being built in each one of these areas. So, thank you, Mike.
Do I hear motion for approval?
So moved.
Skibout? Support? Support Backover? Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say yes. Close call. Call the roll.
Skibout?
Yes.
Backover?
Yes.
Brandon Horst?
Yes.
Dan Stryland?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Motion carried. Yep. I would like to set aside the rules and place a third reading. Motion to waive the third reading and place the ordinance on this reading here.
Support.
By Skibout? Support Backover? Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say yes. Close call. Call the roll.
Skibout?
Yes.
Backover?
Yes.
Brandon Horst?
Yes.
Dan Stryland?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Motion carried. Move to adopt ordinance by Skibout?
Support?
Support Backover? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say yes. Close call. Call the roll.
Skibout? Backover?
Yes.
Brandon Horst?
Yes.
Dan Stryland?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Carry. On to Resolution Number 1532 entitled, "Resolution Approving and Authorizing Execution of an Agreement By and Among the City of Pella, the County of Marion, and the Pella Community School District Approving the Extension of the Division of Tax Revenue in the Southwest Urban Renewal Area." Mike, anything else?
No, sir. What this simply does is approves an agreement. Marion County, the Pella School District is extending the life of the Southwest Urban Renewal Plan for 10 years up to 15 years. So it's very important to note, go through these governing bodies, also stress the need for the county council to be able to housing in our community and their support of this plan. So simply adds on an additional five years on the Southwest Urban Renewal Area. It's the purpose of this resolution. And the other thing to point out is that with the additional five years, it doesn't automatically go to the additional five years. It only provides additional time to pay off those notes. It doesn't pay any extra. So it's just an extension of time.
Do I hear motion for approval?
So moved.
Dan Stryland?
Support.
Support Skibout? Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say yes. Close call. Call the roll.
Dan Stryland?
Yes.
Skibout?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Backover?
Yes.
Brandon Horst?
Yes.
Motion carried. On to 2A, Public Hearing on the Proposal to Enter Into a Development Agreement with Boss Ridge LLC. Mike, could you explain, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. And what we have this evening with this resolution is a proposed development agreement with Boss Ridge LLC. Again, this is for the proposed Boss Ridge subdivision. Boss London Drive is right here. Hole number four and five of the Boss London Golf course over here, County Road T-15 is here. This is a concept tax for the proposed subdivision that we have up here. But overall, it's a proposed subdivision, 45 residential lots. It is currently located within the city of Pella and is also permanently served by all of the city's utilities, electric, water, and sanitary sewer. Let's go ahead, please, Jeanette. Now, the developer is estimating a 10-year build-out on the development, valuations of nearly $19 million to the property tax base. A full build-out. This will result in approximately $338,000 in additional property taxes for the community. Now, as a part of this, when we look at the overall cost to build the development, the developer is requesting partial reimbursement to the cost of the public infrastructure. Very important to note, under the proposed development agreement that we are considering conceding, the public infrastructure would be built to city standards. When we talk about public infrastructure, we're talking about the sanitary streets, the water mains, sanitary sewer, and the electrical infrastructures. All these items will be dedicated back to the city of Pella when they are built, and so they will ultimately be owned by the city of Pella. Let's go ahead, Jeanette. Now, the cost to build the public infrastructure is over $2 million. And what the developer is requesting is a tip rebate in amount of $1,447,659 to be paid over the next 15 years. Very important to note, what is being proposed this evening would be property taxes for new homes that would be built on here. So the developer would only be reimbursed if there's new homes that would be built in the subdivision and they pay property taxes to the city of Pella. The city of Pella would reimburse the developer for property taxes actually received. So what we have here is a maximum of $1,447,000 based on actual property taxes received by the city of Pella. We would only be required to pay if we received property taxes in that amount over the next 15 years. In addition, this amount is limited to the cost of public infrastructure as well, which is currently estimated to be over $2 million to the cap. Because this is the maximum amount. So let's go ahead, please, Jeanette. I guess we'll take a step back. So with the subdivision, we have this proposed residential, 45 lot residential subdivision. Marion County Housing Assessment conducted in 2015 identified an additional 966 housing units that need to be built. In our community, you can satisfy the housing needs. This is proposed 45. Public infrastructure cost is over $2 million. The developer is requesting approximately 72 percent of that through this development agreement. It will be reimbursed over the next 15 years if property taxes are received from the development. So if we have to receive the property taxes from new homes to be built on the property, the only way that we will reimburse the developer for this. So most of the risk is being transferred to the developer for this agreement. In addition, it's also important to note that we will have to set aside approximately 36 percent of this award to benefit low and moderate income families within our community as well. That's approximately half a million dollars that we'll have over the next 15 years to benefit low and moderate income families as well if we pay the developer $1,447,000. So with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes our presentation this evening. We are obviously recommending approval of the development agreement.
Thank you, Mike. Any written comments received? Any oral comments from council? Any oral comments from members of the audience? Do I hear motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
DeYoung?
Support.
Support Backover? All in favor, please say yes. Close call. Call the roll.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Backover?
Yes.
Brandon Horst?
Yes.
Dan Stryland?
Yes.
Skibout?
Yes.
Motion carried. On to 2B, Resolution Number 5833 entitled, "Resolution Approving and Authorizing the Execution of the Development Agreement By and Between the City of Pella and Boss Ridge LLC." Mike, is there more to add?
No, sir.
Do I hear motion for approval?
So moved.
Dan Stryland and support Skibout? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say yes. Close call. Call the roll.
Dan Stryland?
Yes.
Skibout?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Backover?
Yes.
Brandon Horst?
Yes.
Motion carried. Mayor, I would set aside, place a third reading. This is just the resolution. We'll get down to the ordinance here in just a second.
I got it.
Hold that thought. We'll move on to petitions and communications. Item number one, special event permit request for the Snowman Festival. Mike, could you explain?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, this particular request, or this request is for third reform church and the request is to implement a permit on Sunday, January 21st, 24 p.m., known as the Snowman Festival.
Yes.
Bachoan?
Yes.
Rayner Horst?
Yes.
Dan Strylan?
Yes.
Skeba?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Bachoan?
Yes.
Rayner Horst?
Yes.
Dan Strylan?
Yes.
Skeba?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Bachoan?
Yes.
Rayner Horst?
Yes.
Dan Strylan?
Yes.
Skeba?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Bachoan?
Yes.
Rayner Horst?
Yes.
Dan Strylan?
Yes.
Skeba?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Bachoan?
Yes.
Rayner Horst?
Yes.
Dan Strylan?
Yes.
Skeba?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Support.
Support Bachoan?
Discussion?
Hope it snows.
Everybody's hoping for at least a little bit warmer weather, but still plenty of snow. All in favor, please say yes. Opposed, no. Clear call or roll.
De Young?
Yes.
Bachoan?
Yes.
Rayner Horst?
Yes.
Dan Strylan?
Yes.
Skeba?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Bachoan?
Yes.
Rayner Horst?
Yes.
Dan Strylan?
Yes.
Skeba?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Bachoan?
Yes.
Rayner Horst?
Yes.
Dan Strylan?
Yes.
Skeba?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Bachoan?
Yes.
Rayner Horst?
Yes.
Dan Strylan?
Yes.
Skeba?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Bachoan?
Yes.
Rayner Horst?
Yes.
Dan Strylan?
Yes.
Skeba?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Bachoan?
Yes.
Rayner Horst?
Yes.
Dan Strylan?
Yes.
Skeba?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Bachoan?
Yes.
Rayner Horst?
Yes.
Dan Strylan?
Yes.
Skeba?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Bachoan?
Yes.
Rayner Horst?
Yes.
Dan Strylan?
Yes.
Skeba?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Bachoan?
Yes.
Rayner Horst?
Yes.
Dan Strylan?
Yes.
Skeba?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Bachoan?
Yes.
Rayner Horst?
Yes.
Dan Strylan?
Yes.
Skeba?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Bachoan?
Yes.
Rayner Horst?
Yes.
Dan Strylan?
Yes.
Skeba?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Bachoan?
Yes.
Rayner Horst?
Yes.
Dan Strylan?
Yes.
Skeba?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Bachoan?
Yes.
Rayner Horst?
Yes.
Dan Strylan?
Yes.
Skeba?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Bachoan?
Yes.
Rayner Horst?
Yes.
Dan Strylan?
Yes.
Skeba?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Bachoan?
Yes.
Rayner Horst?
Yes.
Dan Strylan?
Yes.
Skeba?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Bachoan?
Yes.
Rayner Horst?
Yes.
Dan Strylan?
Yes.
Skeba?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Bachoan?
Yes.
Rayner Horst?
Yes.
Dan Strylan?
Yes.
Skeba?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Bachoan?
Yes.
Rayner Horst?
Yes.
Dan Strylan?
Yes.
Skeba?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Bachoan?
Yes.
Rayner Horst?
Yes.
Dan Strylan?
Yes.
Skeba?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Bachoan?
Yes.
Rayner Horst?
Yes.
Dan Strylan?
Yes.
Skeba?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Bachoan?
Yes.
Rayner Horst?
Yes.
Dan Strylan?
Yes.
Skeba?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Bachoan?
Yes.
Rayner Horst?
Yes.
Dan Strylan?
Yes.
Skeba?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Bachoan?
Yes.
Rayner Horst?
Yes.
Dan Strylan?
Yes.
Skeba?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Bachoan?
Yes.
Rayner Horst?
Yes.
Dan Strylan?
Yes.
Skeba?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Bachoan?
Yes.
Rayner Horst?
Yes.
Dan Strylan?
Yes.
Skeba?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Bachoan?
Yes.
Rayner Horst?
Yes.
Dan Strylan?
Yes.
Skeba?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Bachoan?
Yes.
Rayner Horst?
Yes.
Dan Strylan?
Yes.
Skeba?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Bachoan?
Yes.
Rayner Horst?
Yes.
Dan Strylan?
Yes.
Skeba?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Bachoan?
Yes.
Rayner Horst?
Yes.
Dan Strylan?
Yes.
Skeba?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Bachoan?
Yes.
Rayner Horst?
Yes.
Dan Strylan?
Yes.
Skeba?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Bachoan?
Yes.
Rayner Horst?
Yes.
Dan Strylan?
Yes.
Skeba?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Bachoan?
Yes.
Rayner Horst?
Yes.
Dan Strylan?
Yes.
Skeba?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Bachoan?
Yes.
Rayner Horst?
Yes.
Dan Strylan?
Yes.
Skeba?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Bachoan?
Yes.
Rayner Horst?
Yes.
Dan Strylan?
Yes.
Skeba?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Bachoan?
Yes.
Rayner Horst?
Yes.
Dan Strylan?
Yes.
Skeba?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Bachoan?
Yes.
Rayner Horst?
Yes.
Dan Strylan?
Yes.
Skeba?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Bachoan?
Yes.
Rayner Horst?
Yes.
Dan Strylan?
Yes.
Skeba?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Bachoan?
Yes.
Rayner Horst?
Yes.
Dan Strylan?
Yes.
Skeba?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Bachoan?
Yes.
Rayner Horst?
Yes.
Dan Strylan?
Yes.
Skeba?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Bachoan?
Yes.
Rayner Horst?
Yes.
Dan Strylan?
Yes.
Skeba?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Bachoan?
Yes.
Rayner Horst?
Yes.
Dan Strylan?
Yes.
Skeba?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Bachoan?
Yes.
Rayner Horst?
Yes.
Dan Strylan?
Yes.
Skeba?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Bachoan?
Yes.
Rayner Horst?
Yes.
Dan Strylan?
Yes.
Skeba?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Bachoan?
Yes.
Rayner Horst?
Yes.
Dan Strylan?
Yes.
Skeba?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Bachoan?
Yes.
Rayner Horst?
Yes.
Dan Strylan?
Yes.
Skeba?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Bachoan?
Yes.
Rayner Horst?
Yes.
Dan Strylan?
Yes.
Skeba?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Bachoan?
Yes.
Rayner Horst?
Yes.
Dan Strylan?
Yes.
Skeba?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Bachoan?
Yes.
Rayner Horst?
Yes.
Dan Strylan?
Yes.
Skeba?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Bachoan?
Yes.
Rayner Horst?
Yes.
Dan Strylan?
Yes.
Skeba?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Bachoan?
Yes.
Rayner Horst?
Yes.
Dan Strylan?
Yes.
Skeba?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Bachoan?
Yes.
Rayner Horst?
Yes.
Dan Strylan?
Yes.
Skeba?
Yes.
De Young?
...to be sold, what would be an appropriate value for that? And we were told that it would be two hundred thousand at a minimum. So in an effort to under promise and over deliver, we're suggesting that the value of that land would be a minimum of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So if this is appropriate and if this makes sense and if it comes to fruition, the city expenditure as opposed to four hundred and fifty thousand would be less in intrinsic value of that land, roughly a hundred and fifty thousand, which would bring it down to three hundred thousand. That is way more talking than I had hoped or intended to do. I would love to hear any questions or comments or concerns from the council. Uh, quick, the question, yeah, the question was, what is our timeframe? Uh, the sooner the better. Mark, that's, that's a fair question. Um, assuming that we get some positive vibes from the council, uh, we would love to work with city staff and come up with a game plan that makes sense. Uh, we have worked really well, uh, with Mr. Nardini and his staff. Uh, we are very like-minded, they have been fantastic to deal with. And, uh, yeah, the, the sooner the better is the, the short version.
Are you doing on the other half of four fifty of the Fields of our Futures?
We will come up with those monies. We have them in-house.
Okay.
Um, I, I think that, that between the partnerships that we have on a corporate level and an individual level, um, people have supported the, the park very well.
So you don't have the funds today?
We have. Right today.
They're in the bank?
Yes, in the bank.
People might need your reaction, but I just go get more.
Can you go raise it to three hundred thousand, really?
I have to be honest, I, I mean, I understand the thought of selling Caldwell. Chances are that that gets sold, I don't, I, I have my doubts on that.
Yeah.
So then it's, it's just more for staff, and I'm, I'm just trying to look at it realistically. I'm not throwing water on anything.
I appreciate that.
But, um, you know, those are all things that we need to take into consideration.
And I, I don't think the use would necessarily, that use is not a use that would transition out to the sports park anyway, because nobody really uses those fields anymore very much to begin with, so. I don't, I mean, from a practical standpoint, there's really, you know, you're, uh, less of value of land freed for other uses. There's nothing that's going to transition out there for part of that, so, I mean, I'm not, again, I, I tend to agree.
We're just looking at it realistically.
I, I just don't see that as, as really have anything at all to do with this project.
I appreciate your thoughts. Uh, i- if I may ask, so your concern is whether, uh, the city would, would sell the land or if there would be a buyer for it?
I think, uh, the use of that land is right now in our ballpark, so I don't think that concerns your project.
It's a non-issue.
I think so.
Thank you.
I would agree with that.
Okay, and, and, uh, to your point, fewer and fewer games are played there, you are exactly right. But there, there are several practices. Point taken on, and it does have to get mobile.
Uh, it's a, it's a cost.
Yeah.
But that's yet to be determined what the ultimate outcome of that property is. And what, if it does get liquidated, what those funds are, are earmarked for, whether it's to be spent here or to upgrade the use of other parks as well, because, I mean, we all recognize, we're not abandoning every park in the community. So we do have upgrades and things to do to those as well, so. I mean, I can appreciate the, the options and the opportunity to give it to you guys, but that's to be determined later.
Yeah, I think that was, uh, we pulled, moved some dust off the old study for Caldwell Park.
Yeah.
And straightening that streak and...
There's, there's some significant upgrades that need to go on down there. If something would happen with that end of the, of the, uh, the property, it would probably be used to offset the expense of...
There's no shortage for where to go.
Understand.
Now, that doesn't diminish the value of your enhancement, that's not it at all, please don't misunderstand what I'm saying. I think the, 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 the ballparks and those kind of things, they still struggle a little bit with the trail piece. I mean, just because, I mean, I agree with you that, you know, ultimately, we do want to put a bike trail out there, come right down to university. I love, I love it that you've got university in there, and hopefully in my lifetime, we'll see that someday, but, um, I, the, putting in a, a trail for bicycles that are just going to ride in the big circle, I, I, I don't know the value of that. Now, if there's walkers and they go out there and walk that, that's a completely different, different subject, especially if we have the trail that goes around the pond or something, so, you have people walking that area. I mean, frankly, those, that big area, as you first drive in there, it's kind of a undulating sight. I mean, quite frankly, I've always looked at that as a great opportunity for us to provide a nature area with wildflowers and butterflies, and we all know that the native, uh, butterflies and, and insects are going way down, and, uh, they're always asking for opportunities for those, so, uh, I could very easily see a trail put in there to walk through it, because I know the, uh, I know the school district used to have a prairie area that the grade schoolers used to tour. My kids have said that they really enjoyed that. Well, that area's all gone now and developed, so I very easily could see that become an opportunity to recreate that for the school kids.
Couple of thoughts, we intend to maintain the natural aspect of that, that's very important to us. And, and as you said, until that bike trail comes to fruition, it, it would be a, a walking path and, and a jogging path. Councilman Bakovin, did you have a question?
Yeah, so, um, the, the two fields that you're, that would be requested on the left side there, those would be for games, not just practice, right?
Both, both and either.
So the two satisfy the demand that, that happens out there? Or is it, would it be two proposed this year, two proposed, the, the other two, or, I, I guess where I'm going is, uh, a couple of things. This, the whole bike trail conversation, Vermeer Road, where it goes, um, and, and the amount of kids, surprisingly, I never thought this would happen, but the amount of kids surprisingly that I've seen riding their bike out here scares me to death in how they're getting their day. So getting a bike trail out there, I think, is, is really, really important. And, and the amount of, you know, this one slide that they provided for us, with the amount of games and things that happen out there, four hundred and fifteen Little League games, six hundred and forty-four Little League practices, that's a lot of practicing. So my question is just, instead of that walking trail, is it better to get the other two fields on the opposing side?
Great question. I, I would like to ask Jeanette for some input, you, would you mind sharing some thoughts here?
Um, as, as far as field usage, the, um, the Caldwell East Field is used for practices, the Caldwell West Field is, is still used for games, as is the Rotary Field. So the addition of these two fields would help get all of Little League's activities out at the sports park instead of playing games in the field, which Craig is right, would save us time and effort and, and, uh, equipment from having to be both in town and out at the sports complex. Um, in regards to, as far as the multipurpose trail, um, there are a lot of people that walk out there, that, that walk up and down that main entrance road during games, which maybe isn't, isn't an ideal location. We've had several of the cross-country teams out there as well, running and practicing, so I think there's a benefit to a multipurpose trail as well. Now, how that's phased in is a, is a different discussion, but...
Jeanette, thank you very much. So to spiffy, specifically answer your question, a couple of years ago, we thought that the, the five fields, Phase One, would be enough. We're finding out that that's not the case. So I think that two fields, uh, two additional fields would satisfy our needs right now. So then, in two to five years, fifteen years down the road, will that change? Well, it might, and it might not. If it does, we have land purchased and we're ready to move forward. The infrastructure has been laid down, so we're ready to move forward. But, but I think two fields would be very appropriate to consider.
I know I'm listening to, uh, to parents, parking is an issue right now, particularly when things roll over.
Mark, thank you for bringing that up, and very candidly, I skipped over that, and, and it's a very important part to the equation. Right now, we have parking that's all paved, and, and there's a shortage of parking. In part of this, uh, proposal, in part of the proposed Phase Two, we're suggesting the actual, or the addition of some parking. Please excuse me. Parking would be right here. And, uh, we're looking at an additional one hundred, uh, parking spots, and there's a method to the madness. Um, due to benchmarking, every new field should have roughly twenty-five parking spaces. So if we're going to add two fields, obviously, we're looking at fifty spaces, we're suggesting roughly one hundred new spaces, so, um, there's forward thinking, so that we're thinking ahead. And one other thing, um, that the parking would be in gravel. Do we want our park as beautiful as possible? Yes, we do, but we also want to keep an eye on the bottom line. So we're suggesting one hundred parking spaces in gravel. Good point, I, I should have brought that up.
Um, I've just heard that when you have it roll over between games, it's just...
It's, it's an issue, no doubt about it. And then, as Jeanette said, when, when, when you've got people taking walks, especially during games, it, it, it's an issue. So safety is, is paramount in our minds. That's why we, we would like, at least like to keep the, the concept of a trail in front of you.
Are the nine hundred dollars and then Craig would be, uh, uh, grading, and would there be curb around this parking lot, this gravel parking lot? Is that figured in? Or is it just rock put down, that's going to have to be moved later?
That's above my pay grade.
Okay.
Can I tell you what I think, though? And, and, um, fellow board members, please step in if I'm missing the boat, but I don't think that there would be curbing around the gravel. It is paved, the infrastructure is down, the ground is flat, we're ready for gravel, but it would not have curbs around it.
Okay.
You agree? Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm fairly certain that I'm giving you positive advice.
It's a class five, down, back up.
Yep.
What would it cost to pave that area?
A lot. And, and, and we have some, some, uh, some costs that we can break down per parking spot. I don't have that with me.
That's fine.
But it's, it, it's significant, and I guess in, in our opinion, we thought it was probably inappropriate at this juncture.
That was...
We wouldn't do this one. But we, we would, we would love to do that.
Long-term plan, yeah.
Yeah, that, that would be great.
Like you said, we've done a, a significant investment in this facility. Long-term, yeah, we want it to pay, but sometimes you, you gotta get along with the budget you got, right?
Yeah, and, and to, to city staff's credit, city council's credit, hopefully Fields of our Future brought a little value added. Um, if and when university was extended, we have some potential parking on the, on the north side as well, and I'm hoping that happens during our lifetimes.
And I got, I have to tell you, for all the other projects and things that, that other interested groups have brought before council, if every one of them came up here and said, here's what I'm proposing, and oh, by the way, I've got half the money in my wallet, in order to facilitate that, we'd have a lot more things done around the community, so compliments to you and, and all the supporters. So that makes it a lot easier for us to swallow and invest in that, because you guys got half the job done.
Really, the sports park gave university a destination.
Yeah.
Extension.
Right.
So it's a matter of time.
Does anybody else have any questions, comments, thoughts?
Well, I'm sure we'll take this matter up at the budget sessions, uh, in the next, in the coming weeks, so, um, at the appropriate time, I may give you guys a call and ask if somebody can come and just talk to us during a budget. If we've got questions or whatever, that's probably when we'll, we'll be making some more final type decisions on this kind of thing.
We would welcome to, uh, the opportunity to keep the dialogue open.
And if there's anybody in the audience, the budget sessions, if you want to come for a couple of fun evenings, you know, please feel free. Uh, we love input, so.
Okay.
It is February thirteen, twelve, and thirteen?
I think that's right.
All right, mark on your calendars. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Thanks.
We'll move on to administration reports. Item number one, what's up with public hearing date, approval of the fiscal year eighteen nineteen annual budget. Mike, could you explain it?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have to deal with all the questions, council staff, we have a public hearing date for the proposed fiscal year two thousand and nineteen budget for March sixth, two thousand and eighteen. Uh, when you talk about fiscal nineteen budget, that would be the fiscal year starting on July first, two thousand and eighteen, and extending through June thirty of two thousand and nineteen. As the mayor said, work sessions for the two thousand and nineteen budget, we'll be on camera ready to vote.
Excellent. Thank you, Mike, do I hear motion for approval?
So...
Support Bakovin and support DeYoung, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say yes, opposed, no, clerk, call the roll.
Bakovin?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Venter Island?
Yes.
Ski Bow?
Motion carried on to resolutions. Item number one, resolution number fifty-eight thirty-four entitled, "Resolution Approving City Council Procedural Rules." Mike, could you explain it?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, background on this item, city council first adopted its procedural rules in two thousand and two, and every year, sorry, we're like a same profession, we review the procedural rules. These rules were reviewed by the city council on January second of this year. The rules, um, there were no changes suggested at times for this resolution to officially adopt the city council procedural rules, and these procedural rules, the members in the audience, if you watch it, as well as citizens at home, if you're watching this, home, government-house, regulate how city council meetings are operated. So with that, Mr. Mayor, with this resolution, we do essentially adopt procedural rules that we discussed on January second of this year.
Thank you, Mike, do I hear motion for approval?
Okay.
Ski Bow?
Support.
Support, uh, Venter Island, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say yes, opposed, no, clerk, call the roll.
Ski Bow? Venter Island?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Bakovin?
Yes.
Branda Horse?
Motion carried on to number two, resolution number fifty-eight thirty-five entitled, "Resolution Approving Change Orders, Number One, Two, Three, and Four with Lawson Construction LLC for construction of the Water Main Relocation Project of two thousand and seventeen." Mike, if you'd please explain...
Yes, Mr. Mayor, once again, I'd like to refer everyone's attention to the debate board for representation on this item. Background on this item, last July, City Appella approved a contract with Lawson Construction for our Water, our Water Main Relocation Project. Now, background, this project did consist of relocating a transmission main, a twelve-inch, uh, transmission main, with a new twelve-inch, uh, water main on the west side of Appella Corporation. This new main extends south and east to Clark Street, and actually ties into our existing system approximately six hundred feet north of Clark Street in the Truman Road intersection. Jeanette, let's go ahead, please. This resolution approved first four change orders for the project, a total just shy of eighteen thousand dollars. We do have the summary listed up on the bid board, this is also explained in the council packet. It is important to note that change orders number one and four were requested by Appella Corporation. They will be built for these change orders, they were in the amount of seventy-one hundred dollars. Therefore, the net cost of the change orders to City Appella is just shy of ten thousand nine hundred dollars.
Let's go ahead, please, Jeanette.
Let's step on the debate board, is there a contract summary on this? We started off with an original construction contract of four hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. Change orders that we have considering this evening, total of just over seventeen thousand dollars, with seventy-one hundred dollars. These are being requested by Appella Corporation, and will be built within the separate, this, the city's change costs, and this is just over ten thousand. The council ordered for these change orders, we have a revised construction contract of just over five hundred and three thousand dollars. It's important to realize that this amounts to three point seven percent of the original contract cost, with global industry standards of five percent for this, and this will be taken to turn at part of our projected change order. So, once again, Mr. Mayor, this resolution first, first four change orders on the project is shy of seventeen thousand, or is shy of eighteen thousand dollars. We leave this by revised construction contract of just over five hundred and three thousand dollars for the project.
Thank you, Mike, do I hear motion for approval?
Sure.
Ski Bow? Work? Support DeYoung? Any discussion?
Well, corporate is voluntary, pick up any of these ones.
And the extra?
Yeah.
Well, they did two. They did seventy-one hundred of it. We're only on the hook, they'll be built for seventy-one hundred in the seventeen.
Is that completed? Did they get her done this morning?
Yeah, it's completed, it's completed.
Absolutely. Now, are they tapping in then, uh, like Area Four?
Yeah.
I thought I saw a pushy out there.
Yeah, and that, that's what that eight or ten by twelve T was, like, they're looking at moving one of the fire pumps to that side. Okay. In the future, however, as much activity I've seen in the last couple of weeks, maybe we're going forward with that now, so. And a lot of that, those other two five thousands dealt with Clark Street, and we got it opened up. Uh, things weren't, as you know, that intersection had been built, rebuilt several times over the years, there was fittings and stuff, and the water was going to be busy by the time we got down, and so we did it upright while we had it open and closed. It cost us a little bit. When we actually, we actually have final change order five drafted, that's going to be a deduct, and we couldn't close out the project yet because we'd have to see it in the spring, so.
Deduct. Number five, Denny.
It's actually going to go down.
He's in a room.
There you go.
Well, I should, never should have missed that one for them. Sorry. It's been a long day.
Yes, I agree with you. Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor, please say yes, opposed, no, clerk, call the roll.
Ski Bow?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Bakovin?
Yes.
Branda Horse?
Yes.
Motion carried on to number three, resolution number fifty-eight thirty-six entitled, "Resolution Approving ordering the preparation of plans and specifications, forming contract notice of hearing and notice of letting, setting the date for public hearing, authorizing the taking of bids and authorizing the bid opening for the Sunken Gardens Windmill Renovation Project." Mike, if you'd explain this.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and what this resolution does, it's a, it's, which is March twentieth of this year is the public hearing date for the proposed Sunken Gardens Windmill Renovation Project. It also authorizes staff to take any and all necessary action to seek bids for the project. Um, we do have background on Sunken Gardens, we believe the windmill was originally constructed in the nineteen thirties and was last renovated in nineteen eighty-seven. There's background on this in July of last year, Klinger and Associates performing assessment on the windmill. While the overall was old, showed a solid foundation, it is a need for repair, and there were several deficiencies on the assessment. Now, we did discuss this item with council during last October, and at that time, the city council directed staff to proceed with renovation of the windmill. Let's go ahead, please, Jeanette. What we have is a schematic design of the picture of the windmill that's being proposed on it, and in essence, what we're looking at is complete renovation of the exterior, including the brick foundation as well. We looked in also on addition of the door to wow, and also significantly improvements to the deck, to allow for public access to the outside deck on the windmill as well. So that's included in the base bid as well. Let's go ahead, please, Jeanette. So when we talk about the base bid, we're talking about the significant renovations to the windmill, as well as the installation of the door, instructional improvements to the deck, allowing the public access to the deck facility on the Sunken Gardens Windmill that's showing up on the big board. The overall cost of the base bid, or estimated cost of the base bid is just over a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. We also have several alternatives, actually four alternatives, these are material adjustments that we would consider with the project, and what these material upgrades would be, would just extend the life of the project as well. And, Mr. Mayor, as far as the critical dates for the project, council approved this resolution, we'll conduct a bid letting on the project on March eighth of this year. Everything goes smooth, hopefully we'll have a bid to consider on March twenty fifth of the project. Now, as far as the proximity start of the renovation, we're looking realistically after two of time of this year, so this could not begin with renovation until after two of time of this year. We're looking, if everything keeps on track, completion of the project will be in September of this year. So with this, Mr. Mayor, we're asking for approval to see your renovation, please, bids of the Sunken Gardens Windmill Renovation.
Thank you, Mike, do I hear motion for approval? So... Bakovin? Support, uh, Venter Island? Any discussion?
Denny, you're gonna, are you gonna advertise, or are you doing this? Sorry, Denny.
Denny can take it if he likes.
How are you gonna, how are you gonna advertise this, uh, bid letting? In usual routes?
Yeah, we'll have, um, Klinger will have it on a planned room, we'll have it, um, in the paper, we'll put it on the city's website, and then we also send it to, um, uh, Master Builders of Iowa to include on their website as well.
No, especially if this is a couple of select phone calls would not, I don't think, be inappropriate.
Yeah, and Klinger's already been doing that, of course, they've been doing some, some legwork.
It's kind of a unique thing, and I think if you get the right contractor...
And it's very carpenter-heavy, too, so we've been, I think, and Kim can expand on what he's been doing, but I think they've been even contacting lumberyards and stuff, zoo by zoo.
Done a lot of research.
Very good.
Especially with, uh, copper roof, right?
That's right.
That's, that's a unique...
Very special.
That's a unique talent, I think. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor, please say yes, opposed, no, clerk, call the roll.
Bakovin?
Yes.
Venter Island?
Yes.
Ski Bow?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Branda Horse?
Yes.
Motion carried on to ordinance is number one, ordinance number nine twenty-eight, entitled, "Ordinance Amending the Zoning Ordinance in City Appella, Iowa, by amending the boundaries of the R one district to include the properties legally described in Exhibit A, and directing the zoning administrator to note the ordinance number and the date of the change in the official zoning map." This is the second reading. Mike, if you'd explain.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Boss Ridge LLC has submitted a request to rezone three parcels of land. It's just over thirty-three acres, and these parcels are highlighted here in this awkward shape right here. It's out on Bossland Drive, Bossland Drive right here, county highway, it's here, currently these properties are zoned A one, agriculture. What's being requested is low-density residential, our, our line of the purpose of this rezoning request is to support the development of the single-family residential subdivision, which is located right here. This is the boss rated proposed subdivision, forty-five block residential subdivision, and we just approved it at all, and we're looking for this evening. Let's go ahead, please, Jeanette. As we said, currently, the property is zoned A one, agriculture. What's being requested is to rezone to R one, single-family residential. We do have the description of the various zoning classifications up on the board, it's also included in the council packet. Let's go ahead, please, Jeanette. It is important to note that the city council does, uh, state, as far as any type of rezoning application, as far as a voluntary petition is requested of the developers, which requires support of fifty percent of the owners of the dream or feed of proposed rezoning. Now, with this, I want to stress, the petition is voluntary. How staff uses the petition is going to be a half request, that don't necessarily align with the city's comprehensive plan. A lot of times, we look at the petition, we look at the signature support, and that's our way to judge if there is a land use conflict with the proposed rezoning. In this particular case, we read this request to align with the city's comprehensive plan, and at this point in time, we're the developer to not send, submit the rezoning petition of this request. Now, as far as spot zoning concerns, again, we are going from A one, A to R one, low-density residential. It's important to note that this development is in close proximity to Bossland and subdivision, and with that, there's other low-density residential homes in the vicinity. We do not believe there are any spot zoning concerns associated with this request. Let's go ahead, please, Jeanette. Now, as far as the city's comprehensive plan, again, this is tough to see right here, but the comprehensive plan, the future use land map of this area actually targets these areas for low-density residential. So from our standpoint, we believe that this request is consistent, aligns with the city's comprehensive plan. Furthermore, under the city's comprehensive plan, the priority goals of the comprehensive plan identify the need for additional housing within our communities, so we can say from the safe staff standpoint, we believe that this does align with the city's comprehensive plan, this rezoning request. Let's go ahead, please, Jeanette. It's important to note, with this, that the planning and zoning commission did consider this request at the December eighteenth meeting, and the rezoning request was unanimously approved. And finally, Mr. Mayor, we would like to mention that the developer is requesting a waiver of the third reading of this ordinance this evening as well. So staff recommendation is we are supportive of this rezoning request, and with that, that concludes our presentation this evening.
Thank you, Mike, do I hear motion for approval?
So...
Support Bakovin?
Support Venter Island?
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say yes, opposed, no, clerk, call the roll.
Bakovin?
Yes.
Venter Island?
Yes.
Ski Bow?
DeYoung?
Yes.
Branda Horse?
Yes.
Venter Island?
Yes.
Motion carried. On to waiver, third final reading by Bakovin, support Ski Bow? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say yes, opposed, no, clerk, call the roll.
Bakovin?
Yes.
Ski Bow?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Branda Horse?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Move to a doubt.
Move to a doubt by Ski Bow?
Support.
Support Bakovin? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say yes, opposed, no, clerk, call the roll.
Ski Bow?
Yes.
Bakovin?
Yes.
Branda Horse?
Yes.
Venter Island?
Yes.
Motion carried on to claims, abstracted bills number nineteen ninety-nine, your motion for approval? Motion to approve an issue warrants by Ski Bow?
For...
Support DeYoung? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say yes, opposed, no, clerk, call the roll.
Ski Bow?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Bakovin?
Yes.
Branda Horse?
Yes.
Venter Island?
Yes.
Motion carried on to other business. Uh, do any council members have any other business that they would like to bring up for consideration at this point? Any members of the audience have any issues that they would like to bring before council at this time? If so, please step to the microphone, give your name...